Thank you. Welcome to our Santaquin City work session meeting. It is Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, and it's 5:30 PM. We welcome those that are here and also those on YouTube Live. We'd like to begin tonight. We're missing one council member tonight. Is she out of town or where? She's probably out of town. Yeah, the work assignment. So anyway, we'll do without her. We'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here that would like to lead us in that?
I will.
Thank you.
Please say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Montoya.
You're welcome.
We'd like to have any vocation or an inspirational thought as well. Is there anyone here willing to do that for us? You got her, John. Thank you.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to gather today as city council and staff and residents and so grateful for the opportunity to represent the residents of Santaquin. We ask thou to bless us and guide us and all those that are presenting tonight to be able to do so and share their preparation and to be able to go forward that way and sharing these ideas and sharing this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. All right.
Don't mind me. It's just a plug.
Being in the work session, we have discussion items. So the first discussion item is a library design presentation. So who do I turn that over to?
We'll see if it comes up. This is Kathy Whedon.
Hi Kathy. Welcome.
Hi, from CRSA Architects.
Okay.
Do I need to speak into the mic?
Yes, please.
Excellent. I will pull it forward. So I'm Kathy Whedon with CRSA Architects. So we are an architectural firm in Salt Lake City. We're glad to be back. We had a chance to work with you previously on your cultural center study. And the bonuses, John and Jen and I have been very busy over the last maybe six weeks designing a library in the wing of your new city hall. And hopefully, we can pass to you some of the knowledge that we've come forward with and some of the vision that the library team has for potentially a new space.
Is this the quickest timeframe?
It is. It is possibly the quickest timeframe. But all I can say is you guys were Johnny on the spot there every time we had a question. And thank you both for facilitating what was really quite an easy kind of transfer. So that was great. Okay, please jump in if you have any questions. So what we want to do is just present a little bit about how this space could work out. This is the main level of what we call the south wing of the new city hall.
The west wing.
The west wing.
Thank you.
The west wing. I didn't get a full floor plan until about two weeks ago and I'm still trying to get my directions. So I'm going to give you some direction. The main entrance to the parking lot on this wing is to the bottom of the page. The main entrance to the corner of the property is at the top. And then the main entrance back to the main part of the building is on the right-hand side. And so the building kind of falls out like that. On this floor, the upper floor, one can exit and enter at grade. We have developed a library plan to help kind of organize the space. Some of the design has already been done. Obviously, the exterior framework of the building, where windows were going to be, a proposition for where stairs and elevators and other things are going to go. And then kind of an ongoing conversation about mechanical and electrical services that are going to come with the building you're building right now. So I'm just going to walk you through some of those. Let's see if I can get something that I can point and you can follow my... Ah, there I am. So this is the entrance off of the parking lot. And we consider this to be kind of the main entrance into the library. The organization, we tested a number of ways and we landed with most of the adults and the young adult on this upper floor and children and juveniles on the lower floor. This gave us an opportunity to take advantage of the parking lot for a potential spot to have a book drop and allow the staff to have an exterior access into a staff work area. So we'll just start with the main front door. So you could come in the main front door and head directly down the stairs and head to the children's area. Or you can come in the main front door and the library falls out this way. We have collections at staff area here. So this is the circulation desk. It's adjacent to kind of all three entrances. This is the first library we've ever worked on that has had numerous public entrances. And the reason I would say this is because public library librarians who don't have an RFID system, which is a collections management tool, get really nervous about their collections walking away. You've invested a lot of money in books and they like those books to come back and stay at the library and not walk away. So having a number of doors is both A, can be expensive because when you get that RFID system, you want it to be at every door so that you have somebody sound the alarm, you know, oh, book walking out. Oh, sorry, we'll let us help you check that out. And so having a singular door into libraries is usually the most cost-effective way we see libraries go. But knowing that you have three entrances, we wanted to make sure that staff could see the three entrances easily and be able to facilitate the exit of books and the checkout of books.
And so you know on that RFID system, it is about 30,000. So you usually have it on each door. So yeah.
So you just keep on adding.
In the next grant, I'm trying for that.
And it is a great thing. It both helps pay attention to what you own, but it also helps the book processing component piece behind the scenes go much more smoothly. So with that said, you come into the library right now and this would be how it flows out. This is new books and some of the things that are easily accessible for patrons. We would also have a self-check station on the way out on the side. And I'll get to some other pictures in a second. So I'm just going to give a brief overview. We have our circulation desk with another self-check station. So patrons can come to this desk if they're going back through the main building to exit or to another meeting or to a class or out the other entrance. And then at this other entrance, we have this kind of as the public notice board. There's a notice board and then there's some storage for other elements of the library. And then we have circulation stacks, which are these kind of white lines you see here, and stacks along the perimeter. We have public seating and computers. And then we have a little bit of soft seating that flows into the space. We have a set of built-in booths. And so we'll show you kind of a 3D picture so it makes a little bit more sense. But I just want to give you kind of the lay of the land because you won't be able to see everything as easily as you do on the floor plan. And then here in this corner, we have our staff work area. So we have a seated height work table, upper storage, kind of staff sitting space. And then we have circulation work counter here. So this is a standing height work area where we can have carts below. We can have lateral file storage and people standing and doing book processing and sorts and other things. We have a little bit of storage along the back wall in that space. And then we have a single space for a single private office and we have a small staff break room. On this floor, we also have the stair that leads downstairs on this end. And we have two, what we'll call unisex restrooms or two single stall men's and a women's restroom that each could have changing tables. And this is on the same on both floors. So just the other floor for just a quick overview. Again, you come down the stairs from the main parking lot entrance and then onto the floor. This gives us a chance to have another new book collection area, a chance for some soft seats and a chance to check out some of the materials that the library collates for patrons in this area. We have another circulation desk on this floor. And then we have space for public meetings. So we have some small meeting room spaces off to the side. These are two-person kind of tutor session or a parent who's coming in with a student who is doing homeschooling. So a chance to come to the library could be a meeting room space for a business. So there's two-person rooms here and two-person and four-person meeting rooms here. And then we have a larger six-person, six-to-eight-person meeting room space here. And behind that, we have a storage space for the library staff. On this floor, this is the children's area. And this is our young adult area. And again, kind of a smattering of computers at tables of different sizes, soft seating for parents. We have a little stage at this end that gives us a chance to have kids and parents come for a nice reading in this space if it's a small group. And then if it needs to, it goes to other spaces in the library or in the building because I know there's some very large meeting room spaces here. Again, this is the stair that comes down and two more restrooms on this end. We have in this interesting little corner, we have two really nice services. So this is a maker space area. So you can check out technology or come for a class. You can come in and maybe do 3D printing or process some pictures or build a craft or come do something fun. So hands-on work area. And then just around the elevator here is a gaming space. So come and sit down comfy seat and play some online video games, torture your brothers and sisters or your adult friends.
While we're watching.
Yeah. And the bonus is that the staff is right here to see into that space and to be able to manage it. So I'm going to go to some 3D views to make this look a little bit more interesting. So this is the upper floor again. This was the end that we have seats along the window. We have some really quick stop seats that can be reconfigured for folks who come. Jen reminds us that many library patrons don't love to sit at a table with 16 of their unknown friends, strangers, so that these tables and chairs can be kind of reconfigured and oriented so people find a place to stop, get a little reading done or do a little reference and not feel like it has to be a social event. We have some nice soft seating in the middle. And then we have some little kind of built-in booth spaces here. That's the main circulation desk behind. This was the entrance from the parking lot. This was kind of our new book collection area. And then here in this corner was kind of the staff work zone, the stair that goes downstairs and then our public restrooms next door. So a bit of tall stacks for collections. We're trying to orient things so that the staff, wherever they are, can keep an eye on the prize, see patrons, make sure that when they are moving through the collection that they can see everything that's going on for security. We did want to kind of show some pictures. So when we talk about self-check, I'm sure you've all been at a library with a self-check station. This is kind of one of those kind of integral ones where you just read the RFID scanner. You're just kind of pushing your book in. It knows what the book is. You've already scanned your library card and it checks out the book for you. And so while you don't have those right now, we've made room for them at these two entrances. We have space for our public art and display throughout the building. In this corner, we have some really nice built-in booths. We have some great soft seating that can be broken apart or pushed back together. And then we have kind of this public messaging board next to the other entrance.
Want this self-checkout. Those usually range 7,000 to 10,000. But I just did a grant for those because there's part of the cares and COVID relief to have people not touch things falls into that. So hopefully, I can get that one.
Nice. Perfect.
So another picture of the main floor to give another view. Again, this is the entrance coming in off the parking lot, circulation desk, the other entrance, the entrance into the rest of the building, and then the collection seating and soft area. Stair going down, staff work area and the restroom. So you're getting a feel for this now. Yeah, different view, but same floor. So we can come back to any of these that you want to. On this end, we have kind of a staff work area, another meeting room space that could become a staff office in the future. We've got some kind of cute built-in seat space that makes it a more cozy, user-friendly environment. They can be of any design you like. We've got some built-in seats along the wall where you can have a little laptop table and sit down and do some research. So the goal, of course, is we started this when COVID was still raging and, you know, keeping people apart, giving people a place to be in the library and get their work done in a really convenient way was really important. So then going to the lower level, this is one view of the lower level. Again, this is the stair that comes off of the parking lot, coming down. New books, easy checkout, pre-prescribed materials here. Our circulation desk is here. This is the entrance into the main building. This is our gaming room, followed by our maker space room. This is kind of the children's area and the juvenile's area. So we've got lots of lower books, books in bins, board books, all kinds of great things for kids. Like I said, a little space that could serve as overflow when it comes to reading or programming, some great little spaces for kids to get together. So here are some good pictures of what things could look like. Of course, this is a space that is a mixture of adult and children's spaces. So we want to make sure we have things that are colorful and fun and exciting for kids who may be just excited to be in a new place, not at home, and others who are really excited about the books and getting a book and having a chance to sit down with their parent or sibling and look at a book. This is an idea for the maker space. Great overhead power and service so that you have some real good flexibility. This space could have closed storage that's lockable as well as a sink if you wanted to do crafts. And potentially for smaller kids, a chance to really have a sit-down space to do some studying or reading. And then this is that compilation of meeting room spaces to the side. This long wall in this wing is a sheer wall, so it has to have few openings. So I think we've configured it well so the library has some good views and access into the space. But having a little bit glassier space allows us to make sure we have some security, easy seeing the people who are coming into this area. A different view of this floor. Again, this is the stair that you come down from the parking lot. This was the gaming room and the maker space room. And then just another picture of what, you know, fun, kid-friendly, active children's area can be. So in this area, we have a raised stage. We've got a little play area with some built-in kind of houses that kids can go in, take a book, sit down on some soft seats. We've got some little built-in benches around the perimeter of the space, a flex area where we could have computers or more children's play games or other things. We've got a little soft seating spot with some bean bags in this corner. So it's a mixture of seats, different spaces, trying to take the scale down to more the children's scale and make it much more friendly and accessible. And that is everything I have. So I'm going to go back to the upper floor and happy to answer any questions you have. And I can talk about budget and schedule and those other things. But I just want to make sure you have an idea of kind of the organization.
Quick question, just so I get it clear in my head. The big room, kind of the open room minus the rooms on the side, what's the dimensions of that? Square footage or outside dimension?
Yeah, the total square footage of the top floor and the bottom floor is 10,775 square feet, something like that.
So five on each floor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And how's that compared to our existing library? Anybody know?
Ours is like, yeah, 3,800. When I went to Spanish work, I think the size is about theirs, their current library. So still, we have about 26,000 items. They have about 80,000.
Items meaning books?
Yeah, like their checkout. Well, anything that'll check out, yes.
Books, CDs.
Audio books, CD books, kits, anything that'll check out.
And that's what we currently have over there? 26,000?
Yes.
So in something like this, how much does it increase our books or size-wise on the checkout items? Quite a bit?
Yeah, we think this is a 10-year, 15-year growth for your community. So it gives you a chance to move into the library with the stacks. We say two-thirds full. So you have the other third to grow into over time.
And then once you grow, then you start just weeding stuff out like we do now. We're just taking stuff out all the time to try to fit in the new stuff.
We've given Jen some collection space kind of in the work area. So we see some libraries storing things that are kind of the lesser checked-out items kind of in the back room where they come up on the screen for your search and they say, you know, talk to a librarian and then someone can pull and draw something from the collection for you. So all libraries are this big balancing act. We were just having a conversation about Orem's library, about seating space, great space for people to come, get away from home, you know, have a different kind of experience in town and collection. So as you can see, we wanted to start out with having collections take up, you know, a good portion of the space, but not all the space. So it's kind of about a half and half right now.
Still ready to add some shelves if we needed to as we go. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Remind me, how high are the ceilings in this?
Wish mine was that good at my school.
The first floor is a vaulted ceiling. You can see the windows, the arch windows and whatnot. So very similar to what you'd see in the... Very similar to what you'll see in the multipurpose room that will be used for the seniors and veterans. I don't remember exactly how high those are. In the basement, I believe that they were planning for 11-foot walls. When you have the drop-down, you'll probably have 10-foot ceilings.
10-foot ceilings, okay.
Not like you're in a compressed basement. It'll feel a little more airy. Then there's a step-down window wells as well that are not just your standard window well, but they're more tiered steps. So it brings a lot of light into the bottom floors.
And on the bottom floor, that's kind of why I had wanted the children's on the bottom after talking to other directors and things. With it being on the bottom floor, the children's, we can really do super bright, super light where if it was like adults downstairs, you don't want like crazy bright colors and, you know, orange and whatever colors you pick. So that on the bottom floor can also make it bright. Things hanging from the ceiling. She has some architectural details that she had just shown, like some basic things to us. That would brighten that area up. So...
There's some other anticipate the children downstairs as well. That is, I can hear when you're kind of above you, is there a dump in or whatever?
Exactly. One of the reasons.
The drop ceiling of the basement will absorb a lot of that sound whereas the vaulted ceiling of the upper floor will radiate that sound.
And we kind of wanted them to be able to have more freedom downstairs so they could be a little bit noisier and not have to worry about it when we're doing things like storytime and stuff to make it better.
This is a library.
No, libraries are not that anymore. I would have not been hired.
I don't know if you saw that.
I don't know if you saw that commercial or whatever. "I'd like to have a hamburger, please" at the library. "This is a library. I'd like to have a hamburger."
Yeah, they really are trying to care more of them. They're still a library, but it's still kind of a community center too. So we try not, unless someone's being super, super loud and, you know, annoying to somebody else there, we don't really try and, we want them to have fun. We want people to come to the library and have fun and enjoy it. It should be a fun place for kids.
Well, and there'll be classes. We're anticipating underneath the multipurpose area on the south wing that there would be classes and that people would be able to flow through down there. Whereas the upper floor, again, it makes sense for the adults because you'd have seniors and other multi-use uses in the multipurpose room or the council chamber is on that main floor as well.
I think it'll be really nice for seniors if it's in the same building too, to just be able to walk over to check out. So...
Is there a wall where that might be a good space for one of our murals?
I would love people to do. I actually thought of things and wondered if people would want to volunteer for a mural or we could do something with like the high school if they wanted a class to do a mural. But I figured that was further down the line.
We have a group already.
We have our mural class. Kyle Vincent teaches a mural class here in the city. And his daughter works at the library. I hired her there. Olivia does? Myra. Myra does, okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we have some really great spaces for public art. And one of them is at the stair that you come in from the parking lot. There's a two-story-high wall space that really is just wraps around you. It could be at the end. It could be something that turns the corner. There's just some beautiful spaces within the library that could easily take a great mural.
Because we've been looking at different locations, right, John? Around the city for where we could have murals done. Yeah, I think it would be a neat community thing to have, like I say, the high school or somebody or the city, how we're doing it to do a mural in there. So I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, in other libraries, we've done, in those meeting rooms, we would have a back wall that maybe would have an accent color, also a great space, you know, for a mural. It might go across two different rooms that are glassy in the front. So there's a lot of spaces that over time you could make.
Yeah.
You could do a mural a year.
Yeah.
Large classrooms on the other side of the building as well.
For free if someone wants to donate it, like the high school or someone. Yeah.
The whole concept and the whole idea here is to give a vision and to create a budget so that we can now seek after grant funding, you know, donations from benefactors. This gives us what we need to really start knocking the doors. And so we appreciate the council's support in helping us put this piece of the puzzle together. Clearly, the city's already done its matching just by building the building that you're about to break ground on. And now being able to fill the space with community gathering areas is going to provide a great amenity to our community.
It's beautiful.
And I know John put the paper in front of you guys too of kind of how it's grown. So if you just kind of look at those fact sheets, even just our summer reading, we usually have about a little over 400 sign up as of today. I have 725 people sign up for summer reading.
That's fantastic.
Tremendous feedback from the food trucks and everything.
Just the growing is crazy with all the younger people. We have 20 to 30 new cards per month since January. And just our storytimes and book clubs. Our storytime is upstairs. I think the capacity is supposed to be like 25 and we have over 40 kids for both sessions. So it's a little bit crazy. And then same, we don't have the ADA access. People with strollers and wheelchairs can't go upstairs to that storytime activity. Magic Tree House, our book clubs and stuff. So and just with the Magic Tree House, you can see that has, we had to split it. It was just one class, a book discussion. And those kids are reading the book and actually having like a book club. It's not like a storytime. It's a discussion group. And they've had to split that into two. So we've split it and now, you know, over the last four months that it's been, there's 94 kids. So that space is just really small for kids.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Do you want to share some of the cost estimates?
Oh, yeah.
Now the pain.
We knew it would be.
Yeah, we know that you guys are in the midst of another project that's going to go out to bid. And I think we can take some of those numbers once you get them and help inform this cost. So we went out to a professional cost estimator in the last week for costs. Currently, there are some things that are kind of in flux. And I think this will be helpful when we get the other cost estimate back to be able to put this together. But right now, the total construction estimate is $1.9 million. And that includes a 25% contingency for escalation and kind of design changes. So really, you know, we're in this world order where our cost estimator, who is usually just a buy-the-books kind of guy, they are talking and estimating every day on projects across the United States. He's like, you know, I can't tell you what the world looks like tomorrow or the world looks like next month. So we're going to put a bigger-than-normal contingency on this one because we're looking out into 2022. So that's one thing that may just, you know, the world may come to calm down a little bit and those prices are going to be easier. We would say usually when we start a project, we want there to be a 15% contingency. That just protects you. And in a way, this project should only be a 10% contingency because you already have your building shell-built. But the material costs for everything from tile to lighting to wiring is just crazy. So they're just protecting you. So that contingency itself is almost $400,000. It's just a pool of insurance sitting there for you. So these are, John and Orem and others have the full estimate. But you can see that there's just a lot of kind of contingency built into this estimate. We would also say that you need to put in about 25% for soft costs. So this is your bookshelves and your seats and equipment for the library. You probably have nothing at your existing library you want to reuse. It's been worn hard. It's been used well. And you've gotten your money out of all your fixtures. So you're going to need to think about getting things new. As we said, you know, depending on construction costs, this again is something that can be phased over time. You know, you can buy the bookshelves you need just for the collection you have and those collections can grow. Just want to make sure you're buying things smart because libraries do have to still pay attention to the code. You want to make sure those stacks are, well, seismically braced. You don't want anything to fall over in case of an emergency on anyone. So libraries are a special space for design that we've come to find over the years. But I think so, think about the total project estimate as $2.32 million as kind of the, what we would say as the kind of gold standard conservative estimate. I'm just going to say, we just did another library renovation that's very similar to this except it was a renovation. But it was a gut and redo, so in a way, very similar. We did it for $150 a square foot. So that'd be $1.6 million. So we have a pretty big range here from 1.6 to 2.3. But that's kind of where we are right now. It's just hard to know where the cost. It's, it's just hard to know where the cost will land. So shoot high, and then, then.
Hopefully spend low.
And then spend low, yeah. Hopefully you'll be able to do what you want. And then, you know, if you have extra, maybe you can invest in RFID, you can build a collection, you can do other things with it. But, um, two point three right now is what we would call the conservative gold standard for, for the build out of this space.
So clearly we have the building and we have, um, uh, you know, what, what we know is a goal, and it just gives us what we need to, to start seeking after grants and, um, and benefactors, so. That's it.
Yep. And it includes things like an elevator. Do you need an elevator when you move in? You'd like an elevator, but you got another one in the building, so. So there's some flexibility there, and John and Jen and I will continue to talk about how to give them the right numbers to go out and do some grant writing and make sure they've got the, the numbers to make those requests. Well, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
And thanks to Kathy, they've been amazing, and she's had me in support every week, and we've changed things every single time, several times a week to try to do it this fast, so we appreciate her dealing with us.
And we've been good. We're like a whole, like digital, like native.
Yeah.
Everything's been online, so.
All due.
It's been wonderful. Norm, I'm going to have to like step over to this. Sweet. Okay.
All right, that's number two. Off-highway vehicle, OHV, use on public road discussion.
We should table this and make them come back next week.
You're up, chief.
I'll talk for just a second. Corporal Hoosier gets set up over there at the, at the table. Um, this subject has come up off and on a number of time over the, a number of time over the years, and, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a fairly serious single vehicle OHV accident, um, on a public roadway. So I requested of the mayor to, uh, possibly, uh, could we revisit the OHV on the city road ordinances and, and, um, see if we could come up with some solutions? And I, and of course, the mayor in turn says, hey, why don't you come in and do a small presentation to the council and explain to them what the issues are that, uh, you guys faces on the enforcement side of it? So, uh, Corporal Hoosier here volunteered to, uh, take on that task. He's a little more familiar with the challenges that we face and, and he just happens to be the investigator for the two most serious OHV accidents that we've had, so.
You weren't going to make him work nights if you didn't do this, were you?
He already works nights, so.
All right.
I'll turn the time over to him.
Hello, everyone. I think we've all met on some.
Yep.
Occasion and had a chance to, to visit about things. I was asked yesterday, uh, by the chief to prepare, uh, a presentation, um, for the council and, uh, so funny line. So I didn't have a lot of time to prepare. You'll just have to bear with the best PowerPoint I could put together with some short notice. As you're going to see in this presentation, uh, it, it's, it, it's going to seem kind of one-sided, but I could only assume that wanting law enforcement to present this is you wanted our perspective, um, on, on the challenges that we're dealing with and, and, uh, some of, some of the problems that we're having. Um, so that's, that's how I approached it. I just, I just approached it from, from a problem point of view, um, and, and have thought enough about it to even throw out some solutions to what I believe or we believe the problem is. Uh, I first want to say that even though I'm the one speaking, I, I speak for all of the Santaquin police officers. I don't have, I haven't talked with anyone that disagrees with what I'm about to present today, okay?
I would just like to add, you know, we're all OHV owners, including the corporal there and myself as well, so we're not, you know, left side, anti-OHV, so.
I grew up riding four-wheelers, ATVs. I currently own a side-by-side. I love it. That's mostly what I do with my family, that's, we don't go on extravagant vacations or anything. When we go, we go to the mountains and we go camping. Um, so I, I like them, they have their place. Um, getting into the presentation, I'm just going to start off with a video. Um, and this, this to me is a lot of our problem. And I wanted to start off with this, and then I was going to go into the two accidents that the chief, uh, mentioned and explain that a little bit to you guys. Go ahead.
Tonight only on seven, we're getting a look at a deadly mix with traffic, all-terrain vehicles on public roads. They're meant for off-roading, but we found more ATV deaths are occurring on public roads.
Our Scripps National Investigative Reporter, Amanda Cost, is tracking the shift to fatal terrain.
Okay, not nine-one-one.
Hey, two kids got run away here. I ran them over here. They're, you know, on the ground, one is dead, I think.
The call for help from this Wisconsin County Road. Eighteen-year-old Chad Raby died here. He was illegally driving an all-terrain vehicle on this public paved road, struck by a trailer trying to pass him on the ATV, killed instantly.
The driver of the car is going to win. It's a four-wheeler. They're not going to have a chance.
And ATVs are not supposed to. All-terrain vehicles are designed and built to be driven off-road.
They don't have on-road tires, turn signal equipment needed for on highway.
Kathy Van Cleek runs government relations for the trade organization, representing major ATV manufacturers and distributors. For decades, their stance has been clear.
ATV should never be operated on paved roads or on public roads.
But they are, and more ATV fatalities are occurring on public roads than off-road, according to the most recent data from the Consumer Product Safety Commission. Nearly twelve hundred and fifty fatal ATV crashes occurred on public roads from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, compared to nearly one thousand fatal off-road crashes.
The fact is that ATVs sometimes are very hard to see if you're in a car or in a truck.
Bob Adler is the commissioner for the Consumer Product Safety Commission.
They should be used in ATV parks where it's safe and where the vehicles were designed to be used.
Just within the last decade, twenty-two states have enacted laws in varying forms, expanding on-road ATV use. In an increasing number of states like Wisconsin, local governments have the authority to allow ATVs on public roads.
We need to open these county roads to ATVs.
Here in Price County, Wisconsin, where the ATV rules of the road were recently up for debate. Among those pushing for ATVs on more paved roads, the local ATV club president.
To make it easier for tourism to get from township or from place to place.
And Price County officials voted to open up more public roads for ATVs.
Would you call it bad public policy?
I would call it very bad public policy. They are moving in a very dangerous and wrong direction.
The CPSC and ATV Trade Association continue their efforts to warn elected officials before they consider authorizing ATV use on public roads. But keeping up with the movement in states and local municipalities has been an uphill battle. From the Scripps Washington Bureau, I'm Amanda Cost.
So along those lines, um, in this last year, I, I responded to two, um, accidents with injuries involving ATVs or, uh, OHVs. Um, one was here recent, uh, just, just a week or so ago. Um, a parent had dropped off, uh, one of their kids to, to his friend's house here in Santaquin, and, uh, the friends decided to go out riding, and the parents were unaware. Uh, the, the, the kid that lives here in Santaquin, his parents were out of town, but he's old enough that he didn't need full supervision like a babysitter. So there was someone looking in after him, uh, in the evenings and stuff. So, um, the, the guardian, uh, in this case, was aware that he was at his own house, um, and had some friends over, but did not know that they were going to be out riding. They went out for a ride, um, went back to play video games and whatnot, and the, the kid that visited from Payson decided to get back on, uh, one of those dirt bikes. It was a one-ten Honda one-ten, and go riding by himself. And this is up on the east bench. Um, he was unfamiliar with, with the motorcycle, uh, I learned later in talking to his parents. Um, he's coming down one of those steep hills, um, four-thirty, four-thirty south up there on the east bench, pretty steep, going too fast, couldn't stop, ran the stop sign, turned on to, uh, was it Ninth East? But he was going so fast, he couldn't make the turn, and anybody that's been on Ninth East knows how wide. That's probably one of the widest roads we have. Um, he went all the way across, uh, all the way across the road, hit the curb. He was ejected from the bike and landed seventeen feet from, from where he hit the curb. Injuries to that young man, he's thirteen years old, a lacerated spleen, bruised lung, broken vertebrae, broken wrist, road rash to the hands, arms and legs. Uh, last year I responded to a four-wheeler accident, um, over, uh, on, uh, seven fifty north and two sixty west. There was three, uh, twelve-year-old males, um, operating a four-wheeler. Two were on the back, one was on the front, operating the vehicle. Uh, this parent was aware that her son was going to be driving the four-wheeler, was not aware he was going to be picking up friends, but that's what they do. That's what kids do. Um, there were some girls, uh, nearby, and the one, the driver started swerving the four-wheeler back and forth. Off-highway vehicles, off-highway don't have the grip that they do on pavement, and, and the dirt will give, and so you can do some of that sliding and stuff and get away with that. On the pavement, there is no give, and you're going to roll that machine, or it's going to grab, and something's got to give. In this case, the kid got thrown from the rear of the, of the four-wheeler, and, um, he was unconscious in the road, and, uh, uh, somebody, a lady that lives in the area rushed to his aid, called nine-one-one, and I got there and, uh, medical transported him to, transported him to, uh, Mountain View Hospital. I did a follow-up the next day to find out the extent of the injuries and found out he was lifelighted to, um, primaries that night for multiple skull fractures. Um, this kid was not wearing a helmet. Um, the one that I talked about previously was wearing a helmet, but it, uh, came off when he was ejected. Not sure how it came off. The kid was unconscious and unable to speak to me when I was trying to figure out whether it was strapped or, or just on his head. So those are two serious accidents and none of which involved another motor vehicle. That was just them driving on the roads. Here in Santaquin in the city. Um, this is state statute forty-one twenty-two ten, point three, operation of, of, uh, off-highway vehicles. Um, the state just don't allow it. They, they say as far as the state is concerned, we're not going to allow it except for, um, some circumstances involving, uh, crossing the road. They can cross the road, like if they're on a trail and they encounter a paved road and they need to get to the trail on the other side, they can cross at a diagonal. Um, unloading or loading an ATV or, uh, OHV, um, at, at a place that's the nearest practical point to a trail or to a designated area for, for these OHVs. Or during emergencies where regular motor vehicle is, um, is restricted for some reason, some sort of catastrophe or something, um, there would be an exception there or when directed by, uh, a, a police officer. Then they also go as far as to say, um, under the, the safety certificate and the driver's license that is required. Um, so right there where it says number two, um, a person may not operate, and an owner may not give that permission, that person permission to operate an off-highway vehicle on a public land, trail, street or highway of the state unless the person, they have to be able to control the vehicle, reach the controls. They, uh, they are under the direct supervision of an off-highway vehicle instructor, meaning they're taking that safety class that they would have to take. Um, they possess a safety certificate, um, or possess a valid driver's license. Um, and, and right there it says possess a driver's license and is under the direct supervision of a person who is at least eighteen years of old, of, um, of the person operating the motor vehicle that is under eighteen years of age. So, so I, I was like, well, that kind of contradicts, so are they, are they letting them ride on the road then? Because, because the first statute says no. What this is, is to cross the road, to actually be on the pavement. The whole, the whole reason behind the safety certificate was to give these, these little guys and gals a way to legally operate an off-highway vehicle off-highway. Um, where we go camping and, you know, recreational areas and do it legally and safely. They've had this course. Um, now they're not supposed to be able to ride on any trail or, or designated area in this state if they don't have that certificate. They got to have the certificate, got to have a parent present. But they will still encounter a road every now and again. We've all been out there and got to cross the road. Um, and so they needed to be able to have that little caveat in there. So that's why, um, that exists that way. Santaquin ordinance six eight twenty says, use on public streets, it's okay. Vehicle use authorized for off-highway vehicles excluding state highways. So all of our city streets, good to go for off-highway vehicles. Causing annoyance is prohibited. Any vehicle operating may not ride, uh, on the highway in a continuous manner along the public streets, causing an annoyance. This is a problem for us. I could have a street, not a street legal, I could have a OHV that has nothing wrong with it. It's got the muffler, it's got its lights. The driver may have his driver's license and, and totally obeying the traffic laws and driving on the shoulder of the road like he's supposed to at fifty miles an hour. But then I get the neighbor that's going to complain about a noise issue or a dust problem, and we have to address that. How do I address that? How do I address his problem with the noise? And this is disturbing the peace, and yet this guy by ordinance has a right to be on the road. So who trumps? And how do I figure that out, right? Um, or permission from landowner, which, private property. Everything around Santaquin is private, for the most part that I know of. Um, we don't have any public trail system like say Moab or, or these tourist place that people need to get from point A to point B to get to a trail here in Santaquin. To get to any sort of good riding, you really need to trailer your, your off-highway vehicles to, to a location. That's what I do. License or safety certificate. Now Santaquin's already addressed part of this, a part of this issue, but it makes it hard because it's kind of like people see, people do. They're restricted. Kids are restricted. Right here, persons ages eight through fifteen shall not operate an off-highway vehicle on any public street unless a person is under direct supervision with oversight at a distance of no more than one hundred feet, within which visual contact is main and advice and assistance can be given and maintained by an adult of at least eighteen years of age. Outside of that, they have to have a driver's license. And so I looked at that and I'm like, well, okay, I can enforce that, but not really. Um, if anybody's ever ridden a four-wheeler with a helmet, can you hear somebody a hundred feet behind you with a helmet riding their four-wheeler telling you to stop? No. So if we've got ten-years-olds and twelve-year-olds and they're in tow with mom and dad or whatever going, and dad says, hey, slow down, wait for that car, he's not, or she's not going to hear dad or mom say that. And meanwhile, the, the cars coming thirty-five miles an hour because that's, that's our traffic. People do thirty-five and twenty-fives, they do forty-five and thirty-fives, that's just the way it goes. They're not going to see them, and if, and, and the little guys, they have no experience mingling with traffic. They don't know how to judge what's safe when cars are coming and going, pulling out into traffic, crossing roads. All of our gas stations are on major roads. Summer Ridge Parkway by the freeway, Cars Gas Station, and then the. All of our gas stations are on major roads. Summer Ridge Parkway by the freeway, Cars Gas Station, and then the three here in town. Um, they're all on Main Street with eighty thousand pound trucks cruising through here daily. It's my belief, it's not an if, but when. Um, uh, I go to one of these and I have to. You know, God forbid pull one of these kids out from underneath the undercarriage of one of these vehicles. I don't wanna do that. Um, none of us do. And, and that, and that's from a public safety standpoint of view, that's, that's our biggest, biggest concern. Outside of the, 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 the noise ordinance or the noise complaints that we get and the dust complaints that we constantly get and. Cuz it's mostly a summer problem. Um, and, and it takes a lot of our time to, to go address those issues. Um, but we're, we, we do. Um. Whether you take the whole, if they're a licensed driver or not a licensed driver, take that out of it. Um, just an OHV on the roadway. These are the problems that I've identified. Um, the state of Utah says that any motor vehicle driven on the road, licensed for the road, has to have insurance. And they're saying that an OHV is not allowed on a public road. But we have an ordinance saying that they are. I don't know what the insurance requirement is for an off highway vehicle. Driven on our roads under this ordinance. Do they need to have insurance? That's, I don't know. Um. I don't, I couldn't find anything in our ordinance that says they, they need to. And so now we've authorized this um activity. But does it fall under state statute for insurance or the state requirement for insurance? Um, as we learned in the video and we already know, they're not designed. The manufacturers have warning stickers all over. Uh, these, these ATVs when you go and buy them. They'll, they'll either say not for under sixteen years of age, not for highway use. That's the way that the manufacturers intended them is to be up where the dirt will give and not be messing with, with traffic. No safety equipment um in the event of a crash. There's no roll cage, no seat belts on these four wheelers and these dirt bikes. Um, there's no airbags to keep them safe like we all enjoy driving, you know, in our motor vehicles. Um. Uh, they're not street legally equipped, a lot of these four wheelers. Um, a lot of them are the old ratty ones sitting in the garage that's been around for twenty years. They don't, a lot of the stuff don't work and they're just out cruising around town. Um, and uh it's hard, it's hard to see these guys um on their little four wheelers and stuff. And the higher the truck gets, the harder it is to see. Um, noise pollution, I kinda addressed that already. Um, road damage, especially the edge where we don't have curbing in Santaquin. Um, that edge of the asphalt gets peeled off cuz they're supposed to by ordinance. Drive on the edge of the road, that's what it says, under fifteen miles an hour. So then it's a, it's a maintenance issue back in the, back in the edge of the road up every year. Um, cuz to save our asphalt from, from peeling away. Um, so uh, I learned a long time ago, if you're gonna present a problem, you probably should present some ideas on. Some solutions um uh, uh, to consider. And, and, and this is really, we're just happy that we've even had an opportunity. Or I've had an opportunity to present what I believe is a big problem. Um, and, and uh, and consider some solutions to, to those problems. Um, I would love to see us repeal, uh Santaquin City repeal. The OHV ordinance in its entirety. You don't need one, you don't have to address, you don't have to address the shoulder of the road if you don't let them on the road. You don't have to worry about the noise problems with OHVs because we already have a noise ordinance in place. I don't have that what gives situation when somebody's annoyed, but yet the, the OHV is legal, okay? Um, so, and, and then, you know, the, the, the insurance um thing that I mentioned, that goes away as well. Um, and from a safety standpoint of view, it's not legal. Now, if they do it illegally, we know how to handle that under state statute. That's, that's not even a problem for us. Um, there's not allowed. And I got to thinking, I'm like, well. Maybe, maybe I'm just, maybe I'm just too far off and left field here. So I called Payson. And I talked to um Payson officers or officer, and I also called Spanish Fort. I talked to Spanish Fort, like we're a growing city. We're not yet the size of Payson. Sure, not the size of Sa- uh Spanish Fort, but we are definitely headed in that direction. Um, I asked them, what are your ordinances regarding OHVs? And both said, what do you mean? We follow state statute. I says, well, how do you address OHVs on the road? We follow state statute. They are not allowed on the road. Do you have any OHV ordinances? No, we don't need to. We follow state statute that address OHVs. They're not allowed on the road. And we handle it accordingly if we find them on the road. So uh, that, that's what my hope is. Is we can just get it repealed and, and if we need to go through a transitionary period um to get that done, that, you know, fine. Uh, to get people, you know, aware of it before it gets enforced. Um. A middle ground would be uh to restrict OHV use to valid driver's licenses only. And get away from mom and dad with their kids or whatever. It's not happening anyway. None of these accidents are happening when mom or dad are there. Um, but they've got it in their head because OHVs are legal on the road. It's okay for little Johnny or Sarah or whoever to, to go out there and ride these ATVs. Um, at least we can establish with, with the uh valid driver's license. At least we can establish a standard that licensed drivers have had driver's ed. They've passed this test set by the state. So nobody should be on the road on a, on OHV that uh ha- doesn't know how to negotiate traffic. Hasn't been through the safety course, knowing what a stop sign is, how long, look left, look right, you know, yield. Pedestrian traffic, all the laws that apply to all of us motorists that, when we went through that. We could at least say we've established, even though we let them on the road. We've at least established a safety standard set by the state that no one can be on the road except licensed drivers. That would be uh something else that uh could be a consideration. And, and then the, then the last solution is not really a solution for me. It's just do nothing. And um, and we continue fighting, fighting the fight. But uh, I, I honestly, I do believe for real. Um, we will have another serious accident yet this year. The, the summer's just getting started. Um, and it's not a matter of if, but when. And we've been lucky. Really honestly, we've been lucky that even those, those are serious injuries, they were only two, three days in the hospitals. Nobody's been paralyzed. Nobody's died yet, but it's coming. It'll happen. So with that being said, I appreciate the opportunity to present this today. Um, and I'm open to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Officer Hoosier?
I have a question. So once a, once a side by side becomes street legal and it has the license plate, it doesn't. It, it's, it's like a car, right? It's, it, they wouldn't.
Yes, sir. I stopped a, I stopped a dad and he was, I think it was a eleven, twelve year old boy. Driving a four seater Razor side by side. It's licensed for the road. So I was making a point by just, by just handling it like uh I would any other uh traffic stop. I stopped the vehicle, I went up to the twelve year old dad sitting there and I just addressed the, the kid. And I s- I said, uh, sir, you don't look old enough to be driving a motor vehicle on public roads. I need to see your driver's license. He goes, well, I don't have a driver's license. I'm like, well, why not? He's, I'm not old enough to drive. And then dad looks at me, well, he's like, well, we're just gonna go a couple of blocks and he wanted to drive and so I said, okay. Um, it's not okay. And I says, well, would you let him get in your F one fifty? And drive the truck over here with you in the passenger seat? He's like, well, no. Well, then why this? This is a two thousand pound machine and you're gonna go tangle with traffic. That's driving twenty five or thirty five miles an hour down Center Street. And he's gotta cross the road. He's gotta know the gas and the brake and all of that. And if he doesn't do it just right, you can have all the input in the world, but he's the one in control. Um, you're still just as dead.
Sure.
And there's still just as much li- liability associated with that. Um, and so I had the dad get out and get in the driver's seat, put the kid in the passenger seat. They put their harnesses on and off they went. And he says, you know what? I never thought of it like that. I just thought because OHVs are okay in Santaquin. As long as I was with him, it would be okay. Um, I've seen kids without parents driving full side by sides, even though they're street legal. That doesn't, the vehicle is legal, the person operating it is not. Um, and I think that it, our, our ordinance really confuses the public. Um, it took me a long time going through the state statutes today. Um, as I was preparing for this and going through our ordinances and cross reverencing, trying to figure it all out. Cuz number one, I should be the most educated person on this when I gotta enforce it. And it's even hard for me um to get it right when I'm explaining it to people, especially parents. And a lot of times the parents aren't even there. I'm explaining it to kids. Then as the chief pointed out to me, he's like, well, you explain it to this child today. He's gonna get his license. He's fifteen years old. He's gonna get his license next year and he's gonna be driving a car. And then the kid coming up is gonna take a spot and just drive that same four wheeler. It's the parents that we gotta do the educating with. Um, and a lot of times it's the parents that are letting the kids. It's a built in babysitter. They give them five gallons of gas. Put it in the garage and they go to work and they just say be safe and off they go. And uh. So that's kinda where we're at with it. So I just, like I said.
You have a question?
Yes, I have a question. So um, there are several individuals in my neighborhood on the east bench. Who have snowplows on their vehicles. And um they'll do their driveway, but then they'll drive down the street to help the widow. Or, you know, to drive around the neighborhood and, and plow for other people. So how, what's your perspective on that? How would that fit into any changes is?
Um, I think that if, uh, you know, if you wanted to. I don't, first of all, see me or any of us enforcing an off highway vehicle. Uh, state statute on someone that's plowing out their driveway. Uh, what I would likely.
Driving down the road.
Driving down the road to get to their, right, to get to their neighbor's house. Um, I, I still don't see that as for us being an issue. It, it may be technically illegal. But what they're doing with it is serving a purpose. They're not recreating, they're not driving around. Like a circuit, like what we see as a problem. And we're not gonna get people injured by plowing the snow, pushing it out of the driveway. Maybe, maybe a car might come sliding down the hill. But yeah, that, that could hit a pedestrian pushing snow out into the street just as easy, I guess. Um, cuz they're, cuz they're out of control. I, I, I think that's a good point. I, I never even thought of that. Um, but I don't think they're gonna be going too far um to do that.
Yeah.
Um, and they are gonna push snow and then get it out there and then hopefully the city plows come by and they take it away and put it in somebody else's front yard. Um, but um, you know, we have that, we brought up the, the plowing or the, or the, the, we have that winter parking. Um, and uh, we're pretty strict with that. We, we, we've been taking a pretty. A, a, a lot's um stronger approach to enforcing that, at least I have. Um, and uh, but we, we put a warning system in place. That nobody's gonna get, nobody's gonna get cited uh without being warned. Uh, and, and, and so we could do something like that too. Um, it doesn't have to be a hard line, strict thing. It can be a, it could be a, a phase out over a period of time where people get educated. And start at sixty days, ninety days from now or next summer or whatever. Um, first one could be warnings and then second might be a fine. Third one might be mandatory impoundment of the vehicle if, if they keep doing it. We see repeat offenders.
Yes.
But there's a lot of options.
I will say that um I think safety needs to be the first priority. And um, and there are also a lot of young people in my neighborhood. Who are driving on private property, who are doing the circuit around the neighborhood at all hours. And going very, very fast.
Mm-hmm.
Very fast.
Yeah, it's, and, and, and you know, the bigger we get, the more people will be annoyed and the more accidents we will take. Um, and so I, you, you know, it's, it's my hope just to get done, be done with it. And we just follow the state statute like most cities are doing. And then it's easy for us um to enforce that. Um, and then it's not, well, it's legal here, but it's not legal there. And then age groups and his mom here, his dad here and all that. Um. So that's if they even stop and we get a conversation with them. Sometimes they just.
Keep on going.
Just keep on going.
I think we better wrap this up. Uh, I wanted to say though, as the mayor, uh. Safety is my number one responsibility. And for seven and a half years now, I have prayed that uh something wouldn't happen, that someone would lose their life. I remember a council meeting when I was on the council, a new resident was sitting there in the audience and he said. I said, what do you like about Santaquin so far? And he said, the four wheeler laws. He says, I was just blown away that I could ride my four wheeler on the streets. And I thought, something's wrong there. And uh, but yet I, I ride my four wheeler on the street. I, I, I confess, I like to go around the neighborhood and I, I keep it under fifteen though. And there's a lot that go faster than that. Uh, I just, I think we need to look at this uh and see what we can do. Um, not only for the police department, but the safety of our residents. And anybody that might be visiting here as well, so.
Mayor, can I add one thing? You're probably gonna get the agricultural.
Yes.
Question. I thought maybe you'd bring it up.
I was, but then I thought.
Yeah.
There is a way, there is a vehicle for, for the ag community to register their uh, uh. Machine as a husbandry, implementive husbandry, is that what they call it? Or farm vehicle. It's a one time cost, it's a one time, and they put a sticker on the side of the vehicle. So that exempts them from most of the state statutes, even the helmet laws. So there is a vehicle for them to do, do their chores and do what they need to do without uh being bothered, bothered by the police.
But I believe it only pertains when they're in that use.
Yes.
Doesn't authorize.
Yes.
Recreation.
Vehicle to be used in a recreational manner.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it allows them to complete.
Yeah.
Like Chief said, their chores.
For legitimate purposes of having.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they could still do that. It wouldn't affect them.
Yeah, which in our community is, is.
It's a big thing.
An important thing to consider because there are a lot of um young people. Um, who ride those vehicles to get from one orchard to the next. Or to get to different things to fulfill their responsibilities.
We never get complaints on them, so it's not really a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've yet to get a complaint on anyone that was changing water or, or doing anything with the orchards.
Well, they, they would have to answer to their folks too. That would probably be scarier than you guys would be.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks. Well done.
Do you wanna touch any, on any agenda items? We'll just save it for the meeting. All right, we'll uh adjourn and be back here at. Time for seven o'clock.